Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. It is Tuesday, May 30th at 7:30 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Uer? Saron?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a form. Next item is Item 2, which is the approval of the minutes for May 16th, 2017, and that's for the Committee of the Whole. Any comments or questions on that?
I had a comment.
Okay.
In the "other" section, there was a note in there about, Brown asked about the survey stakes on the Avondocks and White Castle properties. Should be Abeandocks, I believe.
Correct?
Yeah, A-B-E and docks. That's a business name.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll make that change before it goes to City Council, or then that, we don't have an issue? Okay? Laura, I guess you need to make sure that's done right, because it's already passed, Jenny? Okay. All right, can I get a motion on the approval of the minutes for May 16th, 2017, as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Salvati, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Item 3 is Items Removed, Added, or Changed. We do have a few changes. We're gonna move Item 11 up to right after the consent agenda, and then we'll change Items 7, 8, 9, and 10 consecutively with the item numbers. And then we're gonna remove Item 16 off the agenda, and we're gonna remove Item 19 off the agenda. Sound good? Anybody have anything else? Okay. Move on to Item 4, which is Matters from the Public for Items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to address us on for items that are not on the agenda? Okay. Item 5, which is a proclamation recognizing Jose Tovar for his life-saving use of the Heimlich maneuver and CPR in rescuing a fellow student and his own father. Alderman Atack, I believe you were gonna read the proclamation, and the mayor's gonna present it.
Yes, okay. As you said, this is a proclamation recognizing Jose Tovar for his life-saving use of the Heimlich maneuver and CPR in rescuing a fellow student and his own father. Whereas Hovey Tovar is a 16-and-a-half-year-old resident and student at Musarts City, Child City and School, and had previously received training on the use of the Heimlich maneuver and CPR, and on September 9th, 2016, during the lunch hour, a fellow student was choking on his meal, and Jose Tovar recognized that the student in the vicinity were not reacting, and judged that it was his responsibility to help his lunch table mate. Jose moved into a position to apply the Heimlich maneuver he had learned during freshman year health class, and was able to help the student eject a potentially life-threatening blockage of his air passage. The student quickly recovered his breathing. Whereas on December 23rd, 2016, during a consequent break from school while visiting his father at home, was contacted by his father's girlfriend because there were no answers to phone calls, and Jose accompanied the woman up to where his father had been sleeping, but was now apparently unconscious due to his breathing problems, with blue complexion and no breathing. And whereas a call to 911 was immediately made by Jose, who communicated with emergency dispatchers, who advised him to begin CPR treatment, and for the next 15 minutes, while emergency vehicles were en route, Jose Tovar applied chest pressure and delivered mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. And whereas these actions preserved life-giving oxygen, lung, and heart stimulation until emergency technicians arrived, and Jose was asked by EMTs to continuous effective application of these life-saving techniques while EMTs prepared the stretcher and moved his father into the ambulance. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, and by Fire Chief Randy Deike of the Batavia Fire Department, that such attention to fellow human beings when confronted with a medical emergency exemplify the qualities that characterize a genuine lifesaver. The City of Batavia commends Jose Tovar for his valorous presence of mind, calm demeanor, and maturity in preserving lives of two people in clear crisis. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Batavia to be affixed on this 30th day of May 2017. I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia. I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Motion by Atack, second by O'Brien, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On behalf of the City of Batavia and the Batavia Fire Department, and I might know just a little history here, you know, Musarts has been around for a little bit more than 100 years, and during that time, the Batavia Fire Department has always provided protection or backup protection for Musarts. In the last couple of years, the City of Batavia has annexed much of the land of the Musarts property, all the farm area and everything, so Musarts truly is Batavia. And so we want to recognize you as one of our own, very own, who really has done some remarkable medical procedures here and helped some folks. And so on behalf of the Batavia Fire Department and the City of Batavia, you've just heard the proclamation that the City Council has officially approved, and we just want to thank you and commend you and continue to wish you the best as you go forward. You've almost got a medical career going here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Honestly, it's a really big thing for me. I didn't think much of it as just something I did, something just to do that was right. And now that I'm getting this from all of you, and now that I'm being respected for it, it honestly means a lot to me from all of you. And I will continue to do a career in the medical field, definitely. I've been called for that, so I'm just thanking all of you for this, and I hope that it means as much to you as it was to me for all you letting me and giving this to me. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go on, then, for the change in the agenda. We're gonna do the next item, which is the presentation on the Prairie Street Reconstruction Project. Alderman Wolf, you wanna start that out?
Thank you. This is a discussion on the memorandum that was sent out to all of us about the preliminary engineering for reconstruction on Pine Street, or on Prairie Street, from Pine Street to Wilson Street. And I think we're gonna pull the video up now, Rahat will take this.
Thank you, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you.
So back in December 2016, the city contracted with CMT, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly to do a Phase 1 for Prairie Street reconstruction. We have some STP funding from Ken County Council of Mayors, Ken Kendall Council of Mayors, for doing the reconstruction of Prairie Street, from all the way from Pine to Wilson Street. Now, as part of getting federal funding, you need to do an intersection analysis to make sure that the intersection of, or all the intersections throughout that route is performing at a level of service, at a certain level of service. Now, in engineering, we call the level of service from A through F, A being the best and F being it's failing. So when we did the intersection analysis throughout this intersection, the Pine and Prairie is currently operating at level of service C, I believe, and then Laurel and Prairie is also currently operating at C, whereas when we reached the intersection of Wilson and Prairie, we found that that intersection is currently operating at level F, which means that it is operating at a less-than-desired level of service. IDOT, who is ultimately gonna oversee this Phase 1 or preliminary engineering report, they are not gonna approve anything that has a level of service F after the intersection, after the improvements have been made. So if we reconstruct the Wilson Street from all the way from Pine, sorry, reconstruct the Prairie Street from Pine to Wilson, and if we show that, that Wilson intersection is operating at a level of service F, IDOT will send the report back to us saying, "You need to make improvements or show improvements to that intersection so that it is operating at a better level of service than F." So when we discovered that, CMT and us, we met, and we kinda strategized what to do. So we had a few options in front of us, you know, and none of the options, we could not tell to ourselves that are good options or not. So hence, we are bringing those options in front of you, but before bringing it to you guys, we have met with IDOT and also with KKCOM, who is administering the grant fund, to see whether those options are even viable, you know, or not. So we have three options, or three alternatives that we are presenting to you, okay? So I'll start from the option or alternative 3, which is reconstruction of Prairie Street from all the way from Pine to the railroad crossing. So we'll be excluding the intersection of Wilson and Prairie. Now, initially, the reconstruction was gonna go past the railroad track to all the way to the south edge of Wilson, but as I said, if we go to the south edge, then IDOT is gonna say, "You need to improve that intersection." IDOT also indicated that they will accept this as an alternative because they will see that as an interim improvement. So the Phase 1, the preliminary report that we are gonna present to IDOT, is gonna show the entire improvement, including some turn lanes at that intersection. But we are gonna tell them, that's the Phase 1, that's the preliminary engineering report, but we are gonna do an interim improvement, which is we'll go only up to the railroad track, and we are just gonna stop, okay? And the rest of the improvements will be made at a later point, you know, that's all you need to tell them, that we are gonna make it, but at a later point. Now, I'm gonna jump back. Now, this improvement doesn't require any right-of-way take. We don't have to impact anybody, no residents, no businesses, nobody. So we'll just work within our right-of-way that we have right now, and we'll just reconstruct the street. We'll put a bike path on both sides of the street, we'll reconstruct the sidewalk, we will reconstruct the carbon gutter, put new storm sewer, put new water main and all that. So this is that alternative. This is, so if we go for this alternative, we don't have to get any additional approval from KKCOM or anybody, because the funding was for this improvement, except the intersection. Now, I'm gonna jump back to Alternative 1, which is the other extreme of the improvement, which is that if you wanna get the level of service F at that intersection to something like level of service D, now D might feel like it's just passing, but it's a huge improvement from F. You can see that the exhibit is showing that you need a left turn lane and a right turn lane for both east and west-bound traffic, and you need a left turn lane for both north and southbound traffic with a shared right turn and through lane for the northbound and southbound traffic. So you can see how that improvement would look like for this intersection. So this improvement will require us to take some right-of-way from the two businesses at northeast corner and southwest corner. Obviously, this improvement also includes reconstruction of Prairie Street that I just explained on Alternative 3, which is reconstruction of the entire Prairie Street from Wilson to all the way to Pine. So this is the full-blown improvement. So this, if I can tell you, I don't wanna tell you the wrong numbers. So this Alternative 1 improvement will cost us $3.25 million, because when we do this improvement, we will need a traffic signal at this intersection. Also, we'll need railroad crossing gates at both Prairie and Wilson, because any time if you do an intersection improvement with a traffic signal and there is a railroad crossing there, railroad is gonna ask you to put railroad crossing gate. We have actually talked to BNSF about that, and they said that that would be a most likely requirement from them. So railroad crossing gates is gonna be required at this intersection. So that's a full-blown intersection improvement. Now, currently, we have, as I said, $1.85 million from STP fund, so that will require us to get, to contribute almost $1.7 million from the city. And currently, we have only $650,000 or so funded for this project, so we will need to fund another $1.2 million. Now, we also looked, you know, talked to IDOT and other people that, where do we get this $1.2 million? So there are some funding options, opportunities are out there, but there, some of them are like biannual applications, so some of them will open up in 2019, some of them will be like 2018. So we'll apply, we can apply for that if we choose this alternative, but there is no guarantee that we will get those funding. And if, even though we get those funding, because it's a federal funding, there'll be a lot more hoops and, you know, procedures that we have to go through. That means we'll not do the construction till 2021, at least. It may get delayed even beyond that. So that's the option 1. Then, I'm presenting the option 2 at the end, or Alternative 2, which is almost like a hybrid of Option 1 and, or Alternative 1 and Alternative 3, which is based on what the funding that we have currently. We thought this is probably one of the best alternatives, because we can install traffic signal, we can add the turn lanes on all the directions, left turn lanes. There is, there is gonna be a very minimum right-of-way take, if any. This is, again, this is a preliminary engineering. When we get to the design, we'll know more about it, but from our preliminary look at it, it seems like there is no impact or minimum impact to the businesses. So we can add the turn lanes, install the traffic signal, install the railroad gates, improve this intersection, bring it to a level of service of D, and also reconstruct part of Prairie Street from Wilson to Laurel. So the current funding that we have, with that, we can install traffic signal, do the railroad gates, and reconstruct Prairie all the way to Laurel. Then Laurel to Pine will just grind and overlay, and that will buy us 10 years or so, you know, that resurfacing, because that roadway is not in the best shape, so we'll get most likely 10 years out of that resurfacing. And in those 10 years, we can probably look for more funding opportunity to reconstruct Laurel to Pine Street. So that's the alternative 2, and as I said, that's a hybrid of all the alternatives. Now, again, we are not gonna do the exclusive right turn lane in this alternative, which will require taking right-of-ways from businesses, so this, as you can see, this doesn't show any right-of-way take from anybody. It's, again, it will be an interim improvement. So we are gonna present it to IDOT, saying the full-blown improvement, but this is an interim improvement, and this will take us to 2040 without, again, getting to that level of service F for this intersection. At that point, we may have to, you know, think about what we wanna do, but it gives us another 25 years of a good level of service with traffic signal and a brand-new road up to Laurel Street. So those are the three alternatives that I wanted to present. I have represented from CMT, Kelly and Patrick, both of them worked on this, all this analysis, all the different alternatives. So if you have any question, I'll open it up, and then they will help answering some of those questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Scott?
Actually, I have a question more as a complete overview with Alternative 1 or 2, which would include lights. And I don't, I'm assuming this was not included in our traffic study, but how would that impact the entire thruway of Wilson going down, through our downtown as well?
Well, one of the things we would look at is interconnecting those signals. We haven't done that yet as part of the capacity analysis, but connecting them and setting the timing up so it continues things moving through the corridor would be the objective.
Because I guess that's one of my things, if that's a possibility, I think if there's a way we can make that happen, even if it delays part of this project a year or something, I think that makes more sense than to do the full street and not do anything with that intersection. You know, I mean, everybody that travels that or has had kids at the middle school and lives on the west side, or has kids at the high school and lives on the east side knows that's one of the choke points.
Nobody has complained about traffic in downtown Batavia?
Alan? Dave? The last option, the one we're looking at now, that we've got the funds for, right? That would be with the committed funds, we're not looking for additional funding.
That's my understanding, yes. 2.5 million. What we did, we kind of backed into the 2.5 million, said, "Okay, what can we get done for the 2.5 million?", while also improving the intersection. So we could say, "Okay, how far south can we get with the reconstruction?", and we got to just on the south radius returns of Laurel. And this is, keep in mind, it's preliminary numbers, but we believe we can get a lot of it done for the 2.5 million.
So...
And make improvements.
Right. Right. What's the condition of the infrastructure from Laurel South? Is that something that you, I mean, it's a way we can do what we need to do right now with the funds we have, but do we really need to continue south of Laurel with the infrastructure improvements?
Do we need to do it?
Yeah.
Well, you know, the funding is based upon the federal guidelines, is you have to have logical termini, and since Pine Street's what they call a federal aid route, and so is Wilson, they want you to look at the study of the corridor as a whole. So we did. The funding is, originally, when we approached this project, we thought, "Okay, can we stop short of the railroad tracks and just do that improvement?", because that was the objective of the project from the beginning, until we started looking at the traffic. And we realized, "Okay, Pine Street performs well, Laurel performs well at a four-way stop, and it will continue to perform well until 2030, is when it starts failing at a stop control." They, both those intersections currently don't...
Or...
Yeah, warrant traffic signals. However, Wilson Street, and I know you all know this, currently warrants traffic signals, and the capacity at the four-way stop now fails, currently fails.
But I'm more concerned also with the condition of the infrastructure, the sewer, the water, and the storm from Laurel South. Will it, I mean, to go in there now and just do a Band-Aid over the top of it, is that advisable?
Now, I think, based on my conversations early on with the city, is that we're gonna take a look, it's not gonna be a complete reconstruct of sewer and sanitary, they've had some studies done. We're gonna incorporate their recommendations as far as what needs to be replaced as part of that reconstruction. So when we come back down to Laurel, if we can get to Laurel, all that's gonna be fixed as part of the roadway improvements. If there's anything that falls within that corridor that does need to be replaced, that'll be included in the cost of 2.5 million. We do have a 20% contingency in there to account for.
Right, but I think we're still not in my point.
Okay.
That takes care of everything from Wilson Street to Laurel.
You're right.
But we're avoiding doing anything from Laurel South other than grinding surface.
That's correct.
And is the sewer and the water in the type of condition that we can just walk away from it at this point?
That would be a question for Rahat, or somebody else, I don't even answer that question.
My discussion with Jeremy said that we may have to replace the water main, but we'll have to look at the condition. That question I can't answer yet. But there is no flooding issue or flooding complaint from that side of the street yet. So Scott indicated that, you know, we don't have a problem with flooding, so storms should be working fine.
I just, you know, I hate to see us just do the grinding surface without research in that, you know, whether or not the utilities are in the condition that we can just leave them for another 15 or 20 years, or are they in the condition that we shouldn't be doing what you're proposing?
Yeah, we...
We need to do something, because the pavement is getting to the end of its life, and I think we're just a little early in the process...
To answer that.
...to answer your full question. I think we all fully agree with you that from Pine Street to Wilson, we need to look at all of the infrastructure and hopefully make the dollars work as best we can in doing, you know, hopefully just of minor improvements on the south end there with a milling overlay, we need to do some water main work. We too wanna not have to do an improvement and come back five years doing other improvements. That we certainly don't wanna do.
Alan? I have a question about traffic flow. Will it change, so north of Wilson on Prairie currently is fairly residential and not as much traffic, and then, of course, when you go south on Prairie, you get more traffic, and the same east and west on Wilson Street. Will it change people's traffic patterns? Will they start using north if it's a lighted intersection? Will it then make people avoid other stop signs and come through that residential area more?
We didn't model that, but I don't anticipate that. I mean, off-peak hours, are you seeing that now, on the off-peak hours where people are using it as cut-through? Because the intersection performs well on the off-peak hours, the four-way stop.
Right, right.
Do you see people now...
I just wonder if, because if you're coming down Redan, obviously you're gonna hit a four-way stop. So would people then come through the backside and catch Prairie from Fabian down, and so that they get a stoplight instead of a stop sign?
I doubt it. And the reason I say that is, they're still gonna have to stop if they hit a red.
Right.
It's a gamble whether they're gonna take that risk and have to wait, you know, 90 seconds or a minute 20, or 120 seconds to get a green light. So unless you're seeing a huge backup at Redan, which, are you seeing that now? I mean...
It just depends on the time of day.
Depends on the day and the terrain crossing.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know how much thru traffic we have going from Fabian, south down Redan, then south of Wilson Street. I don't know how much thru traffic there is. There's certainly a lot of people that come off Fabian into the industrial park.
Right.
A lot of people that come out of the industrial park and head south down Redan, but the people going, making that actual continuous trip, I'm not sure that's a high number.
Okay, that's good to know. It's just, you don't know how traffic patterns change, and I know some residents on Prairie Street will be asking me if suddenly they're gonna have a lot more traffic on North Prairie Street, and I wanted to just make sure that I asked the question.
How long does that, on Prairie, heading north, how long does that turn lane extend as designed? It's gonna cut off there.
On her feet? Well, it's, oh, wait, to Webster.
It is to Webster?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Lucy?
Once we get to grade D, is it a big investment to move beyond that? And can we, once we get to grade D, can we easily, can we improve the intersection easily later? I mean, are we laying the foundation for an improved intersection later?
It'll be, really, it's an addition of right turn lanes at that point in time.
And that gets it to an A?
The only difference between the two is the right turn lanes, like the option number 1, which was the 3.2, or 2.6 million, 2.2 million. That included the right turn lanes, which is, that's when you start getting into impacting the businesses along.
I thought that was still a D, though.
It is. It's still...
So then how do you get to an A?
You don't.
You're not.
Okay, so it's just...
The problem is, no matter what we do to this intersection, even if we put right turn lanes in it, there's no place for anybody to go once they turn right.
All right.
And there's not many intersections in the Chicagoland area that operate at Bay and you're at an A, and you're lucky if you get a B.
For projected, this is projected 2040, so it's projected traffic.
All right. So will the markings be carried all the way down to Pine Street? So will the markings, like the bike route?
Yes.
So everything will be...
Absolutely. Yep.
Your Honor? As you may know, I serve as the Chairman of the CMAP Council of Mayors in Chicago, and we had a meeting last Tuesday, and Chad Riddle came up from IDOT, came over from IDOT, and we got into some discussions, and one of the things that IDOT was seemingly proposing last Tuesday before the mayors was getting rid of the bicycle marking lanes on these highways, because they think they are a safety problem, and they wanna stamp the right, the lane with a bicycle emblem versus putting lines in the street, because they say the lines create a very dangerous false sense of security, because people think they can't drive in that area, and so by having just the bicycle lane or the bicycle stamp, you share that lane with the bicycle.
That's right. And this is more of a, if you notice, you can zoom in on it, you have the stripe and the stamp.
Right.
And so as we progress in the project, as we meet with IDOT, taking that stripe out, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal.
I have a feeling the stripe may, days may be coming, because apparently they've had some pretty good action in statewide with that.
I've heard the same thing.
That experience, and they wanna get rid of those bicycle, marked bicycle lanes. They say they're very dangerous and not something that they wanna continue. So it's funny you bring this up, because I was gonna bring this back here, one of these nights, when it was gonna be discussed, and suggest that, you know, that was one of the things I've heard from the residents on South Prairie Street, is they think we're taking too much of the street because of these... is they think we're taking too much of the street because of these bicycle lanes. And it looks to me like if you can share these lanes with these stamps versus the markings, that it, to me, it makes a lot more sense to do it that way.
Yep. It fits. It barely fits, but it fits. And if not, you're going to go with the bike path off, and then you're going to start getting into probably right-of-way acquisition.
Right.
Which we were trying to avoid.
But I had never heard that till last Tuesday, when they came in and said that they were looking at getting rid of these marked bicycle lanes on these FAU routes.
More the marking, not necessarily getting rid of the shared use.
Right.
More getting rid of the white line.
The white line, that white line is the bad thing.
It'd still have the signage and the stamping of the bicycles.
And they had to stamp it right in the pavement every 150 feet or whatever it is. So, which looked to me like a pretty good idea.
Yeah. It was more of a visual, so you understood what we were doing with that extra pavement on the outside. And we'll work through those details as we get closer to the Phase One and the Phase Two, when we work with IDOT.
Alan. Gary, I didn't quite understand, I didn't follow it for Dave's question. Are we looking to do any kind of infrastructure survey south of Wilson?
Infrastructure survey.
The sewers and water?
So we will work with Jeremy and Scott Haines. So Jeremy will handle water and sanitary, and Scott Haines with the storm. Because whenever we do a full reconstruction, we'll want to make sure that we don't fully reconstruct the road over top of a water main, which is about ready to fail.
Right.
But we will do a full, we're just, this is preliminary concept, as I say. We will eventually, though, do a full-blown, you know, analysis, condition analysis of our infrastructure from Wilson all the way down to Pine Street to figure out what needs to get replaced as part of this project, or what can wait another 20 years to be replaced when the resurfacing happens again.
So conceivably, we might have to step up to alternative A or first alternative if.
We might be, I mean, you can, you can replace a water main and still resurface the street. I mean, the resurfacing is just the pavement structure.
Right.
But you can do work on, I mean, we often.
Yeah, it won't be a complete reconstruction, I understand.
The only thing they would possibly do is shorten how much reconstruct we can do. So if you're still trying to keep within the two point five million, if we have to move a block back up in order to get the infrastructure all the way down to Pine, we can certainly do that.
Dave?
What kind of an impact, if you make this total improvement on Wilson Street here in Prairie, and you get the railroad crossings that go in there, the gates? What kind of, I mean, they keep changing their minds, too, what they want, don't they? Centerline dividers and whether the gates ring or don't ring? And, I mean, do we know what we'd be required to do at this point in time?
Not yet. It'll change depending on what ICC has to say. They'll weigh in on a lot, the railroad will weigh in on what their opinions are or is. And we met with him out in the field from the railroad, and he basically said, you know, that they're going to want to do a lot of improvements on the signal equipment that they currently have in place out there. And it's not going to be cheap, but that's included in the number that we gave you.
Well, and it's not only the expense that I'm concerned about, but you've got a couple businesses there that if you have to put center dividers of some type in and block driveways, you know, from full access, that's certainly something that has to be thought about, too. And you won't know that until you go to full design or get.
We'll know that during the Phase One study. Yeah, if you guys give us the go-ahead with this particular option, whatever option, that includes improvements to this intersection, those are conversations we'll have as we progress through. And, you know, we'll stress that concern with the railroad and with ICC on that.
So it could be very, it could be very possible, then, that you might come back to us and say, yeah, you got to put center dividers down, and you got to, you know, alarm the gates, and you got to do all kinds of stuff. And the city council, at that point in time, because it could be two years before we hear back from you, right? Says, we don't want to do that to the businesses.
That's correct.
And we could go back to another option.
Yeah. Because as we were saying, is that the Phase One study is for the entire corridor. It includes everything. It's just when we get into the Phase Two design and what we present in the Phase One meeting, okay, here's our interim. Here's the entire project, here's the entire cost. But we propose we're going to do this interim first, and then we'll do the second stage of the project later. So if it turns out they want to put the meetings in, you guys change your mind, you don't want to do the intersection quite yet, we can go back to the option.
Three?
Option three.
Got you.
We have a contact with ICC that we've been dealing with, and we'll be coordinating with them as well.
Okay. Question I have, maybe Laura or Gary can answer. Do we have the money for this if we choose option two?
So option two, and the reason why it's a hybrid option, it was, we started with the money and worked back. So, yes, the answer is, we're proposing no more money to be spent on option two than we were always projecting to be spent.
Right, okay. But option one with the right turn lanes is beyond our.
Yes, option one would be that extra million dollars that.
Which, because of what surrounds that, I don't know the right-hand turn lanes make sense. With pushing more traffic through the intersection, where do we push it to? So, I mean, I don't know that that makes it, you know, whether it's a D minus or a D or whatever we want to classify it at, I just don't see the realities of an extra lane there being a better thing for that intersection. Especially for the, you know, hour each morning and each afternoon, that it's the problem.
It may be something you want to consider in 2040.
That's right.
But here in 2017, you know, we're confident that option number two is probably your best.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah.
I just have one follow-up. Rahad, you had mentioned that there's other funding sources possibly. If we wanted to go with option, the first option you mentioned, option three, I think. Would you, if we say, let's go with the one that you're proposing right here, the hybrid option, could you also then work with these other possible funding sources to see if we could get additional funding and continue to reconstruct all the way down?
I think that will be the way to go. So we'll, most likely, I was going to propose that let's move with the Phase One, which shows the entire improvement, and come back to council and show you what ICC or Railroad are going to require. So at that point, you can really pick and choose which one you want to do. Because if we choose to do this, I still have to go back to KKCom to reallocate the money towards the intersection more than reconstruction. And they indicated that they will be willing to do that. So I was just thinking about it, maybe I would not go back to them right now. Maybe we'll hold off, we'll just plan on, you know, staying as it is at this point. When council really choose the option, which is most likely going to be alternative two, at that point, I'll have to go back to KKCom and ask them to relocate the money, reallocate the money. And in the meantime, we have probably about, what, maybe nine months to 12 months, we can look into all the other funding options, and probably if there is a call for project. I mean, they, they open up, the application period is like two months, you know, and you have to submit in the application. I know that CMAC application just closed a couple of months ago, like in February 15th or something like that. So that doesn't open up again till 2019. So we'll not be able to apply for that. But there is HCP and some other fundings, so we can look into those. And in next nine to 12 months, we can apply for, if something opens up, we'll definitely jump into that ship and apply for those funding. If we get something, then we'll use it towards this project. So.
So we don't need to make a decision on alternate two, three, one, whichever one we want?
I think the real tonight was to educate you, to make you aware.
Aware of it, okay.
It's a pretty big scope change here.
Okay.
And that we are now considering an intersection with a traffic signal engaged. And we can generally proceed under the idea that we may be looking at option two. But as Rahad said, we'll come back and finalize that with you at one point in time.
I like that idea. Everybody okay with that? Move forward? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item then is the presentation on the wastewater treatment plant Phase One rehabilitation monthly progress report. Alderman O'Brien.
Alderman, I'm sorry to jump in, we skipped the consent agenda.
I'm sorry?
We skipped the consent agenda.
Skip the consent agenda, I'm sorry. All right, the consent agenda is item A, Resolution 17-69-R, authorizing payment for emergency sewer repairs at 423 Spring Street to Suburban General Contracting Incorporated for an amount of $22,980. Jeremy Barki sent the memo out, we all had an opportunity to read that. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Seems like they jumped right in there and took care of a situation that needed to be taken care of, so. Okay. Motion to recommend the city council Resolution 17-69-R.
Moved.
Motion by Elsavadi. Second.
Second.
By Mueller, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. All right, now we'll go on to the wastewater treatment plant Phase One rehabilitation monthly progress report. Alderman O'Brien.
This is just an update for, I guess, the last month. A lot of things done, we did a lot of relocation, I guess, of some infrastructure, some electrical, the fiber optic. So it's all pretty much right here. They're asking, they say they're 6% complete, and they're asking billing to date $492,000, with a retainage of 10%. Anything else, Gary?
Thank you, Alderman. That basically sums it up. For the last couple of months, our internal electric folks have been working to redo the electric service to become a temporary service out there. SCADA, Byron's been working with our SCADA contractor to get the SCADA moved out. In the next 10 days or so, we'll get fiber moved out of that building. And we've now done asbestos abatement out there. And so it's the building right here in the center of the screen, actually. It's the admin building with the existing garage. And so that building will be coming down. Tonight is really just a very general overview of where we've been at. And Alderman's already, Alderman O'Brien's already covered that. What we plan to do is bring you an update every month, and we'll be bringing you an update basically around the second cow of the month. So another couple of weeks, and then that way we'll be on a good schedule, and we'll stay on that schedule then throughout the course of the project. Part of what we're also doing is documenting the project through the use of aerial photography. And I haven't seen this yet, this is a drone. And we'll be doing drone footage of the project as it progresses. Like I said, I haven't seen this, so we'll watch this all for the first time. But Scott and Jerry are here from Trotter and Associates. If we have questions for them, I'll start this, and we can run this. How long is this, guys? Okay, so maybe we'll skip. This is basically all just existing conditions, then, right? So we'll do one flyover, and then we can pause it. So that's the admin building, that building within the next couple of weeks, you will start to see being demolished. As I just said, they've taken the asbestos out of there already. So that building is ready to go from an environmental standpoint. We are now off the screen here a little bit, maybe I'll come back in. We're doing that storm sewer, which will run down Flynn Street, and run right in front of the food pantry and up the hill. And so we have been coordinating with the food pantry. Most recently, she requested some additional signage, just to let people know that they're still open. But we've, I will not take any credit for it. Trotter's basically been staying in touch with Betsy down there every single day, kind of touching base with her, making sure everything's staying on track. So I know she's appreciating that, too.
So there's a bike path there, those two black lines?
Yes, that's the, that's the future bike path. That must be a shot, oh, that's the soul fence. Yeah, that's the soul fence. And so that's the tankage and the digester building. If I really have a good eye, we brought the temporary electric service down here by the digesters. I don't know exactly where it's at, but Jerry or Byron could tell me right where we put it. We'll probably see it in a second. Roughly, is that it right there? A little further south? Okay. Okay. So that's where we brought in the new electrical service for the plant. So this is what we'll do then. We'll basically present once a month, and you guys can watch. And I think what we'll do is maybe every six months or so thereabout, we can replay this video and then show you the differences between this video and the current video. Because this is the first video, so. I'm not saying we want us to keep watching, basically, I think that's the overview of the plant. And I will open it up to questions with. New digester ops building's going right there, correct? Yeah. The lid, the lid, what do you call them? The lids, they're not really called lids. Digester covers, these will be replaced, these are definitely at the end of their life. They're floating, actually, you can kind of tell that from this picture. This one's sitting down in the hole a little bit, this one's up higher. They're in tough shape, they're, we've had some issues with those, so those will get replaced. That, again, I want to stress, and we can put the lights back on, though, is that this is not an improvement to increase the capacity. This is an improvement to address things such as this, that are old and at their end of their life. And this is an improvement, and a sludge processing building. And it's also an improvement to begin addressing regulatory issues. So this is, this is the first phase, not an improvement to expand capacity.
Now, weren't we going to expand it a little bit?
We will ultimately expand capacity, but not as part of this phase, yeah.
Gary, one of the things I've noticed, and I have absolutely no problem with any of the project, I'm wondering if we could do some kind of a signage on First Street going down the hill from Batavia Avenue there by the library entrance? Because I've noticed that with the library, with the bike trail being relocated, that there's a lot of people coming down Water Street, and we got still this real fast traffic coming down the hill on First Street. And I'd like to have those drivers on First Street be alerted that there's a new influx of bicycles in the corner. And then down on Union Avenue.
Pedestrian sign.
Yeah, yeah. And on Union Avenue, where they come up the bike trail alongside the quarry, I sat down there the other day for a couple of minutes and watched this. And they obviously can't go through the plant now. They're going up Union Avenue, and we have some of the guys coming around the quarry and going up the hill probably much faster than they are, not thinking there's going to be any bicycles there, because the bicycles have always been in the plant. But suddenly, we've got these bicycles going up the hill. So if we could put some kind of a warning to people leaving the quarry that there's this temporary bicycle route now going up to Water Street? Because it was a notable thing the other day when I was down there watching. There was.
I think at some point, too, Pamarko, people are going to try to use Pamarko's property as a cut-through, and maybe there's something we can post there to avoid them going through there as well.
Technically, it's all city property, but we're not trying to promote people to go through there.
Yeah.
Because of the issue of the truck traffic.
Right.
So I will ask Bill Callum, who's our sign expert, to make recommendations for.
Can I suggest two other spots? As you're going north, as you've crossed the river, going north on the east side path, you cross at the bridges, and as you're going north, there's a nice sign that says the bike path has been, there's a detour. But as you're coming south on Island, there isn't a sign. So at least there wasn't the last time.
Yeah, that's one of the ones that we're working on. That one's on our radar screen already.
Okay, then there's one more. When you're coming south by the depot, and you get there to the depot, then you really don't know what direction to go.
But that has nothing to do with our detour. You've never known what direction to go.
No, I know, but I'm just adding to the air.
That's always been bad, and that's larger.
All right, but you could still add, you know, just go straight there. At this point, we could improve.
That brings actually a really good point. Bill Callum's been keeping on top of the wayfinding signage that the Fox River Trail is going to install throughout the whole length of the trail. That's actually a 2017 summer project, so that's coming.
Okay.
That's, that's, the King County Forest Preserve throughout the entire length of the county is redoing the signage for the trail. To try and make it better.
So, but the trail doesn't go through Batavia yet?
Well, what do you mean?
Well, is there a trail through town?
You're looking at it, right on Houston Street.
Okay, all right, that one, yeah.
Yeah. So then, I mean, you come down and officially the path is by the depot. It's not the way people go, no.
Not with the detour?
No, it is, it's the official way.
With the detour?
Yes.
So you take the detour and you go down Island, and then where do you go?
So, so up here, I mean, the official, there's never been like an official link down Water Street, although people use it.
Well, that's what I, so what is the official?
That's not, that's not the official trail.
The east side, I think if you look at the actual bike path.
Oh, you have to go to the east side?
Or bike trails, you're supposed to go to the east side.
No one does.
And then come back across at Clark Island.
Yeah, no one does. That's the reality.
And so that, that's not, the word's not out about that.
But we didn't do anything with our detour to affect this up here.
Okay.
Sounds like we need somebody from the Bike Commission here.
I've ridden with the Bike Commission recently, so I'm pretty sure that there's some confusion.
The first, the first couple of times through town as an outsider, even whether you're on the east side or the west side, it's a little confusing to come through, which ultimately is what they wanted to accomplish with the trail-wide signage. But once you do it, as we all know, almost 100% of the people use Water Street or Island Avenue to go, keep going south on the west side. No one, no one really follows the official path. But that is the official path.
But we could have more than one.
Was it?
We could have more than one.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, excuse me, thank you. Yeah, anyone else have any questions? Sorry. Sorry, thank you, Dave. That's it, thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Scott. Do appreciate it. Good to see you.
I gotta give Jerry back his fast drive.
All right. Next item is Resolution 17-71-R, authorizing rehabilitation of the water treatment Tonka Filter Cell with All Service Contracting Corp. in the amount of $44,009,09. Memo from Jeremy Barki, Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, we have in our, I'll just start reading. We have two Tonka radium removal vessels within our water treatment plant, number one. They're suspecting since 2016 some failure. And I guess each vessel has four cells in it and they discovered that one of the cells in the vessel is in failure. So it's a, it's a difficult, I guess, because of the radiation involved in it, we had to have three, they have to have a special company to remove it because of the safety factor involved. And so, so they sent out three bids and only one was responded, one company responded, I believe it's Viann.
No, that's, this is.
On that next one, it was All Service Contracting Corporation.
Yep.
And they came in with the price to do it. So I guess this is going to cover, my explanation will cover probably two things, waiving formal bidding and then we'll vote on the filter cell itself.
Thank you, yes. So we'll have to wave formal bidding. Engineering Enterprises, our consultant, has worked with this contractor in the past and this is really specialized work. This is kind of what this contractor does.
So anybody care to make a recommendation to waive formal bidding? By Changet, second by Stark. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And then we'll get on to the Resolution 17-71-R, authorizing rehabilitation of the water treatment Tonka Filter Cell. As I said, it's, as Gary said also, that it's specialized work. It is, they came in, the engineering estimate was at $41,059. They came in at $44,909. I guess it was due to, you know, kind of improving on the safety factor, having a radiation safety officer on site there. But I do want to note that it's still under budget. It's been budgeted and so we're still under the budget number. So anybody have any questions or concerns?
Just one question, more of a liability thing. This resolution mentioned several times, the hazards and radiation officer. Do we carry any liability, I mean, do we have any liability in this or they're insured and it's all on them?
They're insured. Any contractor that the city uses has to provide us with a certificate of insurance.
Has to cover the city also.
Right, I assume that, but I just really kept saying how hazardous this was.
Yes.
Our, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No, go ahead.
So our personnel also deal with on a regular, you know, they're in that plan day to day. So they also receive specialized training. We also do monitoring. Frankly, just the nature of what it is out there, it's something you need to be cautious of, but it's not like they're exposed. I mean, I would, I'm not, I shouldn't say something because I'm not a knowledgeable person, but I would say something like an x-ray technician may be exposed more every day than our guys are, just because they're physically more in a straight line of it. So, but they do receive training. And if I can also make one last comment, because it also says in here that, you know, this cell has failed, but we've never received and never came close to receiving any sort of violation for radium. We're more, we're very much still in compliance, just one small component of a big system. So we're very much still in compliance.
Gary, when were the. You were 5'10" when you started here, weren't you?
I made that joke earlier tonight, actually, out at the treatment plant.
So Gary, when were these cells installed?
These, these tanks, the Tonka tanks were actually the original back in 93, 94. They were, they were originally used for iron. And then when the plant got upgraded in 2007, we switched their use to being radium and then moved the iron to the next store. So these tanks, that's another thing I indicated tonight, these tanks are at the end of their life.
I was going to just ask that now.
Yeah, they are, they're very quickly, the next five-ish so years, we're going to be looking at replacing these tanks. This particular improvement just can't wait five years. For $45,000, we need to just do it. But it, but it's a sign that we're getting to the point where these tanks are failing and need to get replaced.
Anybody else? Anybody care to make a motion?
Second.
Motion by Changet, second by Serrano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so that goes on the regular agenda.
Okay.
No, can't go with waving bidding.
We're in a way of formal bidding.
It's going to go on regular.
That's regular agenda.
Okay, so Resolution 17-68-R is authorization of an agreement with Viann Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $360,000, which I think Alderman O'Brien is going to have some comments on that for the 2017 Water Main Improvement Project. Again, memo from Jeremy Barki, Alderman O'Brien.
This here is, we've, we've budgeted this, we do it every year. There are three locations where we're going to be improving Water Main. They're under the budget. They came in with a nice number, but they had for the amount not to exceed $360,143, they increased that due to, why'd they increase that, Gary?
So this is my fault for not catching this, because we have a new general procedure and that we're awarding now with the contingency.
Contingency.
Our auditors found that we were awarding contracts and then going slightly over those contracts and never coming back for final approvals. So this is why they went to this procedure of awarding contract with the contingency. So the 10% contingency actually brings it to $396,157,30. That's, that would be our recommendation and we'll fix that in the memo for the council meeting next week.
And then we had budgeted, you know, $375 for the Kikaputachulum and $15,000 each for Washington and State and State Street and Main and Mallory Street. So how did they, so this is just part of the whole package, correct? That we have in the budget, there's a lot of other, there are other numbers in the budget.
Yeah.
The total about 3.8 million.
Okay, so that, that's the, the large number in the budget is for Main Street and/or Fabian, I can't remember.
Right, there's KDOT on Kirk and Fabian and there's water, there's Main Street.
So those are being carried right now in the budget, although neither of those will happen in 2017. In fact, it looks like they may not happen in 2018. So we're pushing those out and keeping those in the budget and we're going to probably have to come back with a rate study at some point in time. And we've talked about those two large projects, but these, this is, these are, I'll call the routine city projects for the year.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Just for clarification, Gary, so going forward then for the auditors, you'll be presenting whatever the contract amount is with the 10% contingency and awarding with that total amount, but that doesn't mean we're going to spend that total amount.
Doesn't mean we spend that total amount. And sometimes it might just be a 5% contingency if, you know, depending on kind of the nature of the project. We've been, and this has been this way now for the past 18-plus months. I just missed it on this one tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, it is not, it's not an open checkbook to staff to spend that amount. It's just an auditor thing so that there's an official authorization.
Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved?
Motion by Stark.
Second.
Second by Serrano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That can go, that can go on the regular agenda then.
Yes.
I mean, on the consent agenda. Mike?
Well, we're going to spend a lot of money.
Oh, let's talk about it then, sure. Improvements to our infrastructure.
Okay. All right. Next item is Resolution 17-72-R, authorizing task order number 24 with RJN Group Professional Engineering Services related to First Street SSES for the amount not to exceed $49,635. Again, memo from Jeremy Barki, Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, this is, it's a lift station sanitary sewer basin and we're going to basically do a sewer evaluation, sanitary sewer evaluation. This is going to cover area three and I believe area two. And both have been budgeted for this year. This year budget, this is just for the engineering services. They're going to be doing, I guess, about six miles of storm sewer, I mean, sewer piping. And they got about 100, in excess of 145 sanitary sewer structures that they'll be looking at, looking at in detail, too, I understand. Where they'll be even climbing down into them to check out some of the structure of them, because they're going to be a lot deeper than a storm sewer.
They'll be a lot deeper than a storm sewer. So they'll look at the boots, the pipe, what we call a pipe boot. And that's where the pipes will come into the structure to make sure that's still watertight connection.
Right.
They look at the base of the manhole to make sure that it's not all fractured or broken or still watertight. They look at the chimney seals, which is up top near the manhole bed. Jeremy's guys have been replacing, I think, 50-some-odd manhole lids this year of ones that they found in a previous study that needed to be replaced. So this is, this is like the study portion and then there's a construction implementation portion, which we either do in-house or we hire a contractor to do to make manholes more watertight.
This is pretty comprehensive, I guess, point we're trying to make, right? So to get that area somewhat, you know, to limit our infiltration and infill.
It impacts areas two and three, but it also impacts the Colonial Village area as well. So there's, there's some general issues on that southwest side that we're really trying to address by doing these studies. Smoke testing will be part of this. As hard as we worked the last time to try and get the word out about smoke testing, I think the fair department was still called once or twice every single day. And that's just, it's unfortunate, it's an unfortunate thing you have to live with because smoke testing proves to be very valuable.
Right.
Smoke testing prove, I mean, just shows you all sorts of things. So it's a very valuable test and unfortunately, a little bit of a pain to go through.
So when this is part of the, will this be part of the construction engineering in the budget? Is this part, this attributed, be attributed to just the construction itself?
This is, so this is more evaluation. This is more engineering side.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any comments, questions? Well, I personally think this is a good price. I mean, it's really comprehensive. And so for $49,000, I just feel from what little I know of it is, we're getting our money's worth. And it's something that's kind of important to do, trying to control our flooding issues in the southwest area. So anybody care to make a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Wolf, second by.
Meitzler.
Meitzler, excuse me, having a brain cramp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So.
Probably ought to talk about it to try to get the word out.
Mm-hmm. Especially about the smoke, so. All right, Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we're going to move on to Resolution 17-73-R, authorizing the city attorney to draft a correspondence to the state of Illinois concerning ownership, maintenance, liability associated with the Potavia North Dam. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you. We'll beat this one again. This is so that our attorney has, I guess, authorization from us to pursue the questions that we keep asking about whether we own it, whether we should take care of it and whether it's our responsibility to sign it. Any questions? Everybody understand that?
I'm not going to support it. And I, you probably know the reason why. I just feel as though if, if we do, and I think we should, take the stance that we don't have ownership. There's nothing saying that we do. There's nothing saying from what we understand now that the state does. But if we raise the question to the state, what's your opinion? Do you think you have ownership? They're of course going to say no. So that then leaves us in the predicament of, do we then say, well, okay, the state says they don't, so I guess we do? I say, we don't own it, we don't own it, we don't own it.
Then we're leaving ourselves up to a court or a judge to decide whether or not we own it when something happens out there.
Let them decide.
Staff's recommendation is to put ourselves in a position where we are protecting against the potential risk by being able to insure against those risks. So we're just trying to move toward, you know, is there, is there something that we could do that would make it acceptable for us to follow those recommendations and be able to put the insurance in place? That's the most important thing.
I think we'd still end up in the same place we're at tonight, where the state would, I don't know what they're going to say, but I'm guessing they would say, no, we don't own it. So then we're going to be back here saying, well, okay, state says they don't own it, so that means we do. And if I'm still sitting here, I'm going to have the same argument, no, we don't. There's nothing showing that we do own it.
And I guess the question of who owns the dam would become, the point at which that question most importantly would be answered is in determining a liability in a litigation situation. And you could wait for that, but then the result of that is going to not be an insurance company responsible for payment of that claim. It would be the city responsible for the payment of the claim in the event that it is determined that the city is the one that owns the dam.
If, if it's determined that the city owns the dam.
And I think you look at all the facts and everything that I can see that we've ever discussed or that it ever is in minutes and everything, and it shows that we own it, we intended to give it to the state and the state never took it. So to me, if it goes to a liability question, we're still going to be the ones that said, well, we don't own it the whole time, but yet we didn't do anything to try to protect the public from it, so then it even becomes a worse liability problem.
If I could read from Alderman, Alderman, if I could read from City Attorney Drendel, because he did offer his thoughts on this. And we were saying that we may submit a letter to the state and they may not reply back for some time. And if I could just read, he's only got two small paragraphs here. He says, "That I would not be surprised if communications with the state go on for some indefinite time. So one question I have is whether we should do nothing until we have reached a resolution with them. That resolution may be a long time coming. It seems clear from the old records we have, such as they are, that we have some responsibility for maintenance of the dam, whether we own it or not. Whether that includes liability, I don't know, but I suspect that maintenance responsibility and liability go hand in hand. That likelihood of present maintenance slash liability responsibility suggests that maybe we shouldn't wait to reach a resolution with the state on ownership and ultimate responsibility going forward into the future." Those are my thoughts. That's, that's from Attorney Drendel.
Somebody did put the warning buoys up north of the dam. Do we know who did that in the river?
North of our dam?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I saw a boat inside of them the other day when I was out walking there.
Just, just within the last couple of weeks, there's been, you know, those buoys that float in the river that say dam ahead. I think there's maybe five of them up there north of Duck Island.
Yeah.
Don't they go in every year or is this new? I thought they were.
I haven't seen them in a long time, but I couldn't tell you for sure, but they are there now.
Right. I don't think they're there over winter.
Okay.
We could check with Park District.
And that's one of the things that, that's one of the things that if we determined who had ownership and we got this report back from the insurance company was going to say that we needed to do, and now it's done.
Well, that's just one, one aspect of an overall.
Right, but I, I just, there's just way too many open holes here.
The example of Geneva was a good example. Laura, you had reached out to Stephanie up there.
Yes, and Geneva has conclusive proof that IDNR is the owner of the dam.
IDNR themselves put out some signage, but the city of Geneva determined that a little more signage would better protect them against risk. So, they put out some additional signage of their own, even though they conclusively don't own the dam. They have on several occasions in the recent past due to fatal accidents. Those, following those fatal accidents, they were made part of the lawsuit, but were dismissed on the ownership issue, but still chose to put signage in to prevent a similar circumstance from occurring again.
Well, I got an idea. Let's find out who put those buoys up and document that, because obviously whoever put those warning signs up felt as though they had some ownership in, in that area of warning.
Can we communicate with IDNR in a way that says, hey, we put some signage to protect the public, but since you own the dam, maybe you should ensure that it's done properly or put up your own signs as well and instigate it that way?
I think at a previous meeting, it was suggested that we would check with IDNR based on whether we came up with a signage plan or whether even the consultant coming up with the signage plan to make sure that it was acceptable to them.
Yeah, permitting would be part of the signage plan. So, the signage plan would be submitted to the IDNR and the Army Corps and say, basically, give us a permit for this. They may turn around and say, you know, we're not giving you a permit, or they may say it's no good, or they may bless it and give it a permit. But basically, at that point, they've signed off on it. So, that, that is part of it. I will follow up to find out who installed the buoys, whether that's IDNR or Army Corps. I mean, I'm not sure who would have, who installs or maintains them.
County, I mean, there's a whole lot of people that could have been.
Yeah, I know. But I, and again, I wanna reread what Kevin Drendel said, but there's a distinction between ownership and maintenance responsibility. And the records that we have all point to us as having maintenance responsibility.
So, if we, if we put the signs in, can we have on the sign a disclaimer, like some sort of ownership or something? Just, but, and I get your point to do that, but to Dave's point, if we don't own it, we don't wanna buy into it except to keep people safe. And if we can do something to that effect, I don't know.
I don't know.
I mean, Kevin says he doesn't know.
Right, and that's part of the reason why staff was recommending this resolution is to send that letter to the state to try and get clarity.
Is, is there a firm further up north that rents canoes or paddle boots?
What's that?
Is there a firm that rents?
Yeah, right in Geneva, isn't there a?
I wonder if they were required by their insurance company to put buoys up or something. No, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have the right to do that. It's gotta be through Waterways Department of the DNR.
You get a warranty on that, right.
Well, warning signs of lookout for a dam.
No. Oh. Why don't we call down to Yorkville and see if the buoys are there too?
Well, they, they are at other dams along the river.
They are at other dams.
And have been. So, I guess that's why I thought it was.
Well, it may, it may be authorized by them, but it could be anybody that does it.
I'm saying they're probably directing it.
Does this ownership issue impede our ability to work with the Park District to improve the river frontage in that area and make it recreation friendly and all that kinda stuff?
That's another kind of piece in the huge puzzle, because if there's a fatality or some accident out there, we're going to say we don't own it, and then the attorney will turn around and say, well, why are you doing a several hundred thousand dollar study of the dam if you don't own it? That's, I mean, it's just a big piece of the puzzle. And we can turn around and say, well, we just wanted to do the study, even though we always know the state's own the dam, 'cause we just wanna present a case to the state.
Because we're afraid it's gonna collapse.
The argument will play, play both ways. We don't, no, we're not afraid it'll collapse, 'cause it's a state's dam.
Yeah, but we don't want the pond to be.
Well, I'm just.
We know it's gonna collapse, because we've said it dozens of times on TV here. That's not a question.
I think that's why I wanna just, I mean, I understand to Dave's point, you know, that you don't wanna accept any liability that you don't think is yours. However, we're here trying to make the river the focus, and we want to have a plan on that. And I think that by doing this, at some point, we've gotta proactively get out there and say, we either own the dam or we don't own the dam, and settle that issue once and for all. Throw the cards whatever way it may be.
We could settle it right here tonight. We don't own it.
But we, but you can't ignore the, the written documentation that we do have for it that kind of does lead that way. An impartial person is going to look at that and make those recommendations, and I'm, I'm like, why would we want to wait to go to court and this and that when all the things that are going to be used against us, I can just running through the things in my head. You started making plans, you started wanting to do this, you started wanting to do that, you went through the records, your record showed this. It's just checkmark, checkmark, checkmark. But the counter of that is a discussion with your father from years ago. That, in front of a jury, isn't gonna necessarily balance out, and that's where it's.
Marty, I'm even taking that discussion with my father out of it. I'm looking more at our liability and our cost looking forward, you know, if we say we own this dam. There's nothing saying that we do. So, if we start saying now that we do, we now assume all responsibility in my mind. And I don't look at us having discussion about the dam any different than I look at us having discussion about how we improve the riverfront down here where somebody else owns the riverfront. You know, it, it's, it's planning. That's what we do.
But I think the key part about it goes back to the liability aspect of riverbank collapsing in doesn't have the inherent danger that is all the other parts of the liability that we're talking about. And I think that is our responsibility to just figure that out and, and just settle it. And that's why I don't have the problem with supporting this for this, for that reason.
And it's being said that there's no documentation that points to the city having ownership of the dam, but there actually is in nineteen ninety-four attached to the resolution approving, deeding, sending the deed to the state. We have the document where we are saying we're the owners and we want to give ownership to you.
And there's no receipt of that. There's, again, no receipt from two thousand and five or whatever it was when we had our last really big one in the referendum about what we do with the dam. And then going back further than that, there was one of the other ones before we did the repairs on it in the early seventies, there was a request from the state to prove that we had
We had.
ownership along the shore for access of it.
Right. We could acquire the rights necessary for them to get at it for access.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we did.
But I believe that also states that we owned that.
You know, it stated then that we were responsible for the maintenance. After they, after they plugged it up, we're now responsible for the maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, if the, or the referendum had, that had gone previously, the vote had said, yeah, take it out, could we have taken it out then?
Yeah, 'cause the state was gonna pay for it. At that time, the state.
They were gonna pay for it, but, but was it ours to say yes to taking it out?
Ownership was not an impediment to moving forward with the project, so maybe it was a.
The state didn't.
Damn, they didn't have.
No, I mean, I wasn't here, so I don't know how it was phrased, that the city is asking you to tear out our dam or giving permission.
We're not paying for it. I don't think we care to.
Yeah, well, I don't, I mean, apart from the, the not paying for it.
And in my recollection of it was with, and this goes, I think it was Arlenjewell was the head of the DNR at that point, was they were not gonna take ownership from us unless we had a plan to remove it. Then they would take ownership of it. That's the way I remember it being said. And at that point, it was us and Yorkville. Yorkville already had their plan ready to go and was approved. They got the money. They had it done.
And I think we'd like to put the city in the same position, should there be money at the state level at IDNR to do these projects, that we have a shovel-ready plan to show them so that we can remove the problem and remove this question from being relevant.
But we can have shovel-ready plan without having ownership, right?
You can have a shovel-ready plan without having ownership. That is true. And then the other aspect of it, though, is the protecting against liability. I don't think you need to answer the ownership question there either. But there's the, the issue that's being brought up about, does putting signage in place suggest ownership?
Well, I think, as Gary just mentioned, and it, Kevin Drendel's opinion, that there'd be quite some timeframe here of them deciding and thinking and whatever else they may do. So, I don't see any big hurry to make any action on this tonight. I think we oughta see if we can figure out who put those warning buoys in and, and why they put them in before we move any further with this.
I kind of feel it's the responsible thing to put signage there and protect the city and get insurance.
We're not gonna be able to prevent somebody from going over the thing and dying. If we put a sign up there, that's not gonna stop somebody
Right.
from going over the thing. It's the moral right thing to do to put a sign up there regardless.
But I'll have the same argument, shouldn't we put signage right out here where there's people walking in the river tonight fishing? Can't legislate against stupidity, right?
But there's not a boil.
But it wasn't under the recommendation.
There's holes, there's holes where they can fall in, fill their waders up with water. It's just as risky, but it's not just.
But the insurance company's asking us.
Certainly walking on the river, I would do that, but I wouldn't go over the dam. But something could happen.
Mm-hmm. But in order to get insurance, we need to do it. They're requiring that.
Right.
That's the difference. They're not requiring that we put a sign down here where they're fishing enough.
So, for us to get insurance, we have to put up signage. Morally, it's, it's the right thing to do to, to keep people safe.
Mm-hmm.
Right? As long as we, in some verbiage, something put back to our insurance company, yes, we're gonna comply with your wishes. Just be clear, we do not own the dam. We'll comply with your wishes.
Can you put that on a sign?
I don't think you can say that, 'cause I don't think you can answer that question.
Be careful here, but we don't own it.
Well, yeah, I mean.
We just put a memo in the file and say, look, we did this, 'cause we thought it was the morally right thing to do. It's right outside our building, and our community uses this, and we want a sign there to say that, you know, there's, when the river's high, it can be dangerous, or at other times too, I guess, and then get insurance.
I mean, we want, we do want the insurance coverage, absolutely.
You know, you, you talked to, Laura, you talked to Geneva about the fact that they put signs in even though they are definitively answering the question, they know they don't own it.
Right.
Is that for an insurance requirement for them, or is that just because they wanted additional signage out there?
It's because they wanted additional.
So, they don't have insurance on having the dam?
They're not owner of the dam, so they don't have insurance.
Yeah.
They're very high-profile deaths.
Right.
As a reporter, I call that once a year.
I think if, if we did have a body go over, you know, and we can't prevent it, I would rather be on the side of, we did everything possible to mitigate the liability on that rather than fighting about ownership in the long run.
I agree, and I can't imagine that signage is, is an admittance to ownership, and you might wanna run that by Kevin, but he seems kinda, this is all up in the air and it can go either way down the line anyways, so I would definitely err to the side of caution and put signage up.
Or we sue the state. That's really what we're, what we're up against. We made efforts to acquire property and tried to hand it to them, and they said, nothing. So, I suppose we could sue the state and say, take the property that we were supposed to give you. Yeah, I think that's an option.
And everybody knows in a lawsuit, fatality death, everybody gets dragged in anyways until they can prove they're out.
And that's. At least you visit Geneva.
So, I imagine that, that factors into Geneva's decision to put more signage there because of the public perception and because they get dragged into these things often.
We could put up signs and not ask for insurance.
Put up signs filed lawsuit before a dead person files one against us.
Any other comments? Do we want, do we wanna table this for now?
I don't.
Or do we wanna send it through?
I have one question. The insurance covered more than just the dam, am I right, or was the insurance just for the dam?
Just for the dam.
Okay.
It was a ride we wanted.
Curious as to how that works then. I mean, because there's areas alongside the dam that are just as dangerous, and there's areas, I mean, if somebody dies fifty feet below the dam because they went over the dam, does the insurance cover them, or how does the insurance work when we're saying just the dam?
Depends on how good your lawyer is.
So, what they would look at was, did the city's failure to post warnings, did that, was that a factor that could have prevented this person's injury or death?
And I bet there are a lot more deaths under a dam than there are fishing, and which is probably why the insurance company got to this point.
I still think we oughta find out who did post warning before we move any, make any decisions.
Well, we have a, a resolution before us, if anybody would care to make a motion on it. We can table it.
Or it dies due to failure of a motion.
Well.
I'll move, we recommend a city council approval of Resolution seventeen dash seventy-three R, authorizing the city attorney to draft correspondence to the state of Illinois concerning ownership, maintenance, liability associated with the North Potavia Dam.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Chanzet. Roll call, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
No.
You are absent. Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Attac?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
No.
And O'Brien?
No.
Motion carried. Ten to three.
Goes to city council with a positive recommendation.
All right.
Thanks, Kerry. Thanks, Callahan. Okay, then we'll go on to Resolution seven.
Dave, before we go on, can we ensure before the city council meeting, we can get information on the buoys and stuff?
I'll do my best.
Yeah, we will do our best.
If you guys figure it out.
The council always has the option, as city council, to table the matter again if they.
Correct.
All right, Resolution seventeen dash seventy-four R, authorizing an agreement with Skyline Tree Service in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for the east riverbank tree and undergrowth clearing project adjacent to North River Street parking lot. From Sky at Haynes. This is all of the area. Alderman Wolf, you can take this.
Thank you. I'm waiting for it to open. Um, this is for the trees along the new parking lot that need to be removed. And I think you looked at that at the meeting that I missed. And let's see, we had quotes. The third quote was for thirty-eight four hundred, and this would be originally, our first thing we'll need to do is to weigh formal bidding on it, and then the second would be to approve the resolution. Anybody have any questions on this?
I have a couple of comments. I think it's a really good idea to clear out the brush, but I think it's gonna look really kind of barren for a while, and I'm wondering if there's any way we can plant some, something green along the way. And I, you know, I have looked up further north to the boathouse, and it's not completely barren. There are, there are some trees along the bank, and I just think it might look a little, little nicer. And, you know, I think you can get some greenery that wouldn't, like, change this quotation that much. I mean, maybe a few thousand dollars, but.
Well, installation of new landscaping was a direction that council had given staff as part of our walk-through that night. So, that's separate from this, but you've already given direction to staff to explore new landscaping along the riverbank.
I did, I, we talked about it, but I didn't know that was.
Yeah, so that's something we're working on separately as a different project.
And I have one question since I wasn't there. Are we gonna leave the cormorant tree, or is that gonna go to?
The recommendation was to take it all down.
Okay.
You guys can change that.
Yeah, let me, let me just make a couple of observations about that. There was quite a bit of conversation amongst the aldermen about that. So, following the walk, I got ahold of the city arborist, Mr. Sopp, and asked him to come down, and he and I went over there, walked the whole thing, and he went tree by tree over there and said, you know, most of this stuff is just scrubbed, it just ruined. So, now we specifically focused on the, on the big dead tree.
Mm-hmm.
And he says, I says, you could keep this up, but he says, my thoughts are, within a good wind night, you're gonna lose this thing, because, as he pointed out to me, you can reach underneath the trunk of the tree now. There's so much rot underneath that. So, he says, this thing is coming down. You can either cut it down, or it'll fall down, and then you don't know which direction the wind's out of. It could fall into the comm ed wires, it could fall back into the river, and then it would be a much more expensive thing to take it back out of there. So, his recommendation was, but, he offered up the idea, 'cause he's a big birder and likes all that stuff. He says, this is a prime spot, because as most of you know, underneath the bike trail that runs along the river there underneath the Wilson Street Bridge, the state put in a, a, a pond down there for nesting of fish. So, we are generating a lot of fish right in that location there. And so, the other point is, is that because fish swim up the river and they get to the dam and they can't go anyplace, there's a big collection of larger fish that live in that area, and that's the reason these birds like to sit there, is that they can see when these fish are there invisible, and they get down and help themselves. So, it's kind of a Mother Nature thing in place. So, Mr. Sopp suggested that we maybe should get ourselves a couple of large poles, and after we get the thing all cleaned out, that we sink like a couple utility poles in there and not put any utility on, but maybe just string a wire between them and then allow the birds to sit on the wire. Or even he suggested that we put a couple of arms on the poles, and some up here and some down there, because different birds sit at different ice. And he says, you probably can create for yourself quite a local observation point of the public, 'cause you'll get a variety of birds here with this, you know, this nesting of the fish underneath the bike trail, and with the dam, it's gonna be a classic place where all the, the big birds are gonna wanna sit. So, he says, I don't think you'll lose them. You just need to recreate another area for them to, to sit on. So, I would suggest that maybe when Gary gets it all cleaned out, that's one thing we can take a look at and see if we can put something like that in there.
If I can add there, as another local birder, the reasons I sit up there is they have no oil in their feathers and they have to dry their wings. So, they're not like ducks or geese or whatever. They have to sit there and dry their wings. So, Jeff's accurate. There's a local fishery, the reason it's not so convenient, it's open, they sit in the sun and they can dry their wings off. So, the pole idea is very good, but it does need to have something on which they can grip. They can't sit on the wire, they're too big. But they could sit on poles, and that's what they can do with Ospreys, and they do it with cormorants. And eagles have been done with them.
Frank suggested a wire, one or two wires for smaller birds, but he said the pole, just as you just said, the arms. the arms going off the poles would be where the bigger birds would sit.
Gary, when they cut those trees down, how much? I know we're leaving the stumps in for stabilization, but how close to the ground will they cut them? Will it be like even height? Will it be staggered? Will it have any appeal out of the ground?
You can't answer that entirely.
I just wonder.
They're gonna be trying to cut trees on the side of a slope like this. So I bet, my answer would be that there's gonna be all sorts of randomly, yeah.
Just wondering.
Any other questions? Anybody care to make a motion on seventeen seventy-four?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Concerned agenda?
Sure. It has to waive formal bidding.
Oh, waive, we...
That's right.
Okay. So I need to back up. I need to back up. And then the first thing we needed to do was to have a waiver of formal bidding.
Technically, you don't have to do that at the council.
Oh, we don't have to do that at the council?
No, you do at the council.
We can do that at the council meeting then. Okay. Next item is Resolution seventeen dash seventy dash R, authorizing a contract with Perform Construction Engineering in the amount of $286,000 for Area Two Storm Sewer Separation. It's the area of Elm Street. Memo from Andrea. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is the Elm Street project. The bid opening took place on May twenty-third. The improvements include separating the storm sewer from the sanitary sewer at the intersection of Main and Thirty-One, connecting a new storm sewer to the existing, separates, separates the storm sewer along Thirty-One. And this phase of construction will require Thirty-One and South Batavia, or South Batavia Avenue to be reduced from four lanes to two lanes. So this is gonna be a pretty big construction project.
Yes.
Do you want to fill us in on the rest of the details?
Yeah, so this is the, other than doing the main street, this is the Area Two Sewer Separation. This is the last piece of the sewer separation at Elm and Thirty-One. We are gonna separate it and connect to the Thirty-One Storm Sewer that's already existing. And then we'll go down Elm Street all the way to Jefferson. And there is an existing storm going south on Jefferson, so we're just gonna connect it there too. The bid prices came in. We have included the construction plans in there too. The engineer's estimate was $379,000. We got a pretty good price, a pretty good range. The lowest bid price is at $260,000. The staff is recommending that you approve it with a 10% contingency amount. As far as traffic is concerned, the traffic will be, first all, traffic will be down from four lane to two lanes. First, going southbound direction. The second phase will be going northbound direction only. And then there'll be a period of time when we are really crossing and they will have to stop traffic on both sides and move them through the flagger operation. I don't want to stir the thunder of Laura's, but IDOT will be resurfacing Thirty-One following this project. So we'll have quite a bit of cost savings by going into and doing this project right now. We'll be taking out curbs, sidewalk, and a lot of other things. I'm gonna go to the IDOT pre-con meeting on June eighth, when they are gonna have the pre-construction meeting for Route Thirty-One resurfacing from Main Street to all the way to North Aurora. So we are gonna coordinate with the contractor, make sure that IDOT is aware of all this. They are gonna restore behind us. So we are not gonna even resurface Thirty-One. We'll leave everything for IDOT to do it. We'll just patch it up with temporary patch and not even stripe it. So it's a good coordination with IDOT resurfacing project for us. And Elm Street will do the same thing. We are not gonna resurface with this project. We are gonna do the Elm Street with 2017 Street Resurfacing Program. We made it a part of that project. So again, we are gonna just patch it up. And then the resurfacing contractor is gonna come and grind it and pave Elm Street from Thirty-One to Jefferson. So we are doing some coordination this year. Route Thirty-One is through IDOT. Elm Street is with the resurfacing program. And also Hart Road, where Jeremy is doing Waterman Project, we are gonna also resurface that with the resurfacing program. So we get a good cost-saving through coordinating all those projects.
When you go up Elm Street, is that all gonna be within the curb line or are you gonna be going out into the right of way?
No, it's all gonna be within curb line.
Okay.
So pretty close to the curb line. So we should still maintain.
But you're not gonna be taking out anybody's trees that are in the parkway and things like that?
Dave, I just want to add to what Ray Hotch just said. Last week, when I was in Chicago to see MAP, IDOT did share with me that both the Route Twenty-Five and the Route Thirty-One projects in Batavia are out for bid.
They opened the bid. Actually, yeah, they opened the bid on April twenty-eighth. Both those projects are gonna have a pre-construction meeting on June eighth, back to back. So one is at one o'clock and another is at two o'clock.
Anyway, they were aware, our staff had been enlightened enough that they had good talk to you because they told me that they knew that this was coming, but they wanted to encourage me to try to get you folks to go ahead and follow his lead and get this done as quickly as they could because that could be a little bit of a hiccup in their bidding process or whatever if, in fact, we stalled out here and didn't do this. So as he just indicated very happily, this is a good opportunity for us to maybe not have to spend some money here because they're getting ready to do it. They got this big thing about making all the curbs that come onto Batavia Avenue and Route Twenty-Five ramped curbs that we get rid of the step because they're real big on handicapped accessibility. And so that's one of the things that, they complimented me about how good our engineering staff had been to work with. But this will include everything from Main Street in Batavia down to Maple Avenue in North Aurora on Route Thirty-One. And on Route Twenty-Five, it's from North Avenue in St. Charles down to Wilson Street in Batavia. So that, both of them are fairly good-sized projects.
Right.
And so, but they wanted to make sure that we could get this done pretty quick so that we don't get in the way of the timing of this thing. So are they the same contractor doing both jobs, you know?
No. Thirty-One is done by builders paving and Twenty-Five is done by Geneva Construction.
Okay.
This performance construction, they're quite a bit underestimated. I'm assuming you checked references and everything?
Yes, we did call City of Aurora and they highly recommended them. They, I guess, I was talking to Andrea because she called and I was off. She said the owner of this company used to be the utility manager for the City of Aurora. So he apparently knows. You know, we were also concerned that they're kinda new. I think they established themselves in 2015. So we checked references and they all checked out pretty good.
Any other questions? And with the contingency, it would be $286,000 for the package, not to exceed. Anyone care to make a motion on Resolution seventeen dash seventy dash R?
Make a motion. We recommend the city council passage of Resolution seventeen dash seventy dash R, authorizing execution of Contract Performance Construction Engineering LLC of Plano, Illinois for the Area Two Storm Sewer Separation, Elm Street.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Callahan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Regular agenda on that so we can talk about it since that is something that affects one of our problem child areas. Okay. Ordinance seventeen dash thirty-nine, revising Title III and Title V of the Batavia Municipal Code amending the video gaming provisions. Alderman Atak?
Yes. Staff is recommending we tighten up the licensing requirements so that only establishments having a Class A or D license for the consumption on premises would be allowed to have video gaming. And this would eliminate the option for people that are selling packaged liquor or doing tastings or that sort of thing. And Chief, would you like to address that?
Yes, just a quick background. If I could just do a quick summary. Currently, the municipal code on video gaming was written in compliance with the Illinois Gaming Act. In accordance with the act, video gaming licenses issued to liquor license holders are only to be granted to licensed establishments. By definition, contained within the act, as well as our current code, licensed establishments are defined as any licensed retail establishment where alcohol is drawn, poured, mixed, or otherwise served for consumption on the premises. Since the adoption of the current ordinance, there has been several questions posed to the police department regarding which liquor licenses constitute consumption on the premises. For example, does a license which allows sampling on the premises reach the threshold of consumption on the premises or the intent of the language in the code to include only establishments where the purchase and consumption of alcohol on site is a staple of the business? Examples, taverns and restaurants. This question was posed to city attorney Kevin Grendel, who was instrumental in drafting the current ordinance language. His response to the question was essentially that the local ordinance was crafted to conform with the act's requirements of consumption on the premises and that the intent was limit video gaming only to establishments with liquor licenses which allow full-fledged consumption of alcohol on the premises. Not for those license holders with Class B package sales who also have companion sampling license in Code Section three dash, three dash fifteen dash three. He also indicated that when staff and legal counsel were crafting language for the current code, we never envisioned people hanging around in the liquor stores playing video games. I do not believe that this was the intent of the mayor and the council at the time the original ordinance was being constructed. Therefore, staff is recommending that the committee uphold tonight and then the city council approve Ordinance seventeen dash thirty-nine, revising Title III and V of the Batavia Municipal Code, authorizing video gaming, which clearly defines authorized liquor establishments as only those having a Class A or D license for consumption on premises at the Monday, June fifth, 2017 city council meeting.
Are our friends at Speedway fitting into this?
They're classified as a truck stop, which is, falls under state statute.
Correct.
That's what I wanted them to understand. They would maybe be the only one then that somebody may want to ask some questions about.
Right. Any questions? Other questions?
Is Speedway looking to have this?
Yes.
They already got it under construction?
Yes.
Oh.
The other thing that I will tell you, I've gotten a couple of calls and comparing notes with the PD, I think they have two. There are a lot of people in here kicking the tire, wanting to open up, I'll call it, coffee shops where they want to have these video poker machines. And so I'm told that the reason we want to do this is, is that Batavia's got one thing going for it that these people really like. And that is, right now, we've got three and we're about to have four large-scale senior citizen complexes. And the senior citizen population is a primary purveyor of these machines. So we're targeted in the eyes of a lot of these coffee shop folks, I'll call them, that they would like to have coffee shops to invite the senior citizens in to play their machines.
Now, does the police seem, do they think that maybe these people who want to come into our town are looking to prey upon our senior citizens?
I wouldn't say prey upon, but I'm sure the thought's out there to establish video gaming parlors.
But they have to have been in business and served, had a liquor license for a year before they could...
Correct.
See, and that's what's, we've stopped them at the door with that requirement.
Mm-hmm.
I had one today call me about it, you know, and was nosing around. And so they're really there. And I had the opportunity to talk recently to the mayor of La Grange and he's kind of got the exact same problem going. Although his problem has now moved itself right south of his town on, if you're familiar with La Grange, La Grange Road, right south of town is Countryside. And so La Grange has kept the coffee shops out, Countryside has let them in. So he's got, if you want to see what I'm talking about, just go down on Forty-Five South La Grange, right south of town, and the coffee shops are there.
Which, you know, there's that proverb, proverb, what's, how do you say that?
proverbial.
Argument of, you know, we don't allow it in our town, but then the people in our town will go next door. So then that stops businesses from our town from, you know, it goes on and on.
Dave, when you checked out the, what were their names? Millies?
Betties and...
Betties, Betties, yeah, Betties. Was it primarily senior citizens that were in there? Do you remember? Did you go in?
Yeah. I'd say, I've been in there, Alderman O'Brien went in there with me one time and I've been in there a couple more times just to check it out. Again, I haven't put a quarter in the machine yet. But I'd say it's a mixture. If I had to really think about it, probably more elderly people than younger, obviously, yeah. I mean, you don't see somebody like Dan Janzik in there. You're a younger guy. You might see somebody like me in there, I don't know.
I just wondered. I mean, I don't know, you know, I'm not anti-gambling and I wasn't, you know, upset when we allowed gambling in the restaurants. It hasn't changed where I eat or don't eat, so I...
Well, I like the way we've got our ordinance written where it kind of puts a roadblock on them where it keeps them out, you know?
We had some of the existing folks stretch our sign ordinance.
That's, yes.
I will tell you that.